Download the My Hingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease. Available on the App Store and Google Play. You can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps on your phone. Using the My Hingham app puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, and info about our boards, committees, departments, and services. For more information, please scan the QR code on your screen.
This meeting of the Hingham Select Board is called to order. A note for the record that this meeting is being held in person and remotely as an altered means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. The record will reflect that attending tonight's meeting are myself, William Ramsey, Chair, Board Member Liz Klein, and Board Member Julie Straley. Next item up is the Pledge of Allegiance for those who are willing and able. Please stand and face the flag of our nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sure, you can recor-- yes, absolutely, absolutely, no problem. Your permission is granted. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. Let me know. Appreciate it. All right. Next item up is the approval of minutes. Believe we have, I believe we have one set of minutes tonight. You ready to proceed, Liz?
I don't think we do.
We do not? Okay. All right. Sorry, we do not have minutes tonight. The next item, we will move then to National Safe Boating Week proclamation. Ken, come on up. You're up. Tell us about this proclamation and what exactly is National Safe Boating Week.
Thank you for having me this evening. National Safe Boating Week is designed to bring awareness to boating in Massachusetts and all over the country to, you know, basically make sure people are aware of the activities and water are safe, primarily to promote the use of life jackets, number one. So by signing this proclamation, that would just be kind of joining in and agreeing and publicizing the importance of Safe Boating Week.
Great. Well, thanks for doing that. You know, we've been very fortunate with water safety in and around the harbor, and I attribute that to you, you and your great work and your deputies. So thank you for that. Liz, any questions or comments?
Thank you, Ken, for bringing this forward. I think it's a great idea to promote, especially in advance of Memorial Day weekend and when officially boating season kicks off. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Julie?
No question.
Any members of the public have any questions or comments about this agenda item? Seeing none, we're going to break up the proclamation into three parts. So Julie, if you don't mind, we'll start with you.
Okay. National Safe Boating Week. Whereas on average, 700 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the United States, approximately 70% of these fatalities caused by drowning. And whereas the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor decisions and not by the boat or environmental factors, and...
Whereas a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. And whereas today's life jackets are more comfortable, more attractive, and more wearable than styles of years past and deserve a fresh look by today's boating public.
Now, therefore, we, William C. Ramsey, Elizabeth F. Klein, and Julie Straley, Select Board of the Town of Hingham, do hereby support the goals of the North American Safe Boating Campaign and proclaim May 17 through 23, 2025, as National Safe Boating Week. At the start of a year-round effort to promote safe boating, we urge all boaters to always wear a life jacket, take a boating safety course, schedule a vessel safety check, and to learn and practice safe boating habits dated this 13th day of May, 2025. Signed, William C. Ramsey, Chair, Elizabeth F. Klein, and Julie Straley.
I'll make a motion to proclaim May 17 through May 23, 2025, as Safe Boating Week in the Town of Hingham. Second.
Hallows in favor by roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, all the motion carries unanimously. Ken, stay up here. Oh, I'm going to bring you back in a second. We're going to do the Girl Scouts now. But thanks. Stick around, though. Stay in there.
I won't go far.
All right. Next item on the agenda is Hingham--
All about their initiative, but the girls had to identify a problem in their community and figure out how to solve it pretty much all by themselves with little adult oversight. So we're very excited and grateful to be here, and thank you for the opportunity. Okay, Laney, do you want to come up first?
Would you be willing to introduce yourself on the record to say who you are?
I'm Laney Carter.
Welcome.
Do you know just how driving a car down the road can endanger a turtle? When a turtle is trying to get from one pond to another, they often have to cross roads. This means these little turtles have to go against huge cars. A driver may not notice a turtle in front of them. The car will drive over the poor innocent turtle. The turtle will get severely injured. Some may die on the spot, but it gets even worse. This happens many times. Even if a turtle is taken-- so even if a turtle is taken to a hospital, it will get so crowded that doctors can't help all the turtles. Some aren't treated quickly enough. Many die. Thousands of turtles die every year. This is why we should help these turtles.
Excellent. Good job. Thank you.
I'm Estelle Fogel. We've diagnosed many things from months of research. I'm going to list some things we're absolutely sure of. First, we need at least 450 for the signs. Each sign costs up to $130. We need three. And plus shipping. Signs will go at intersection of Route 53 and Lower Gardner, which will be one sign, and near the entrance to Black Rock, which will be two signs. This will help the turtles and people be more aware of turtles. Turtle season is May through July. The signs will flip over when not in use. We have permission from the DPW, which is the Department of Public Works. This is a good Bronze Award project that will benefit other lives, human and turtle alike, for a long time.
My name's Olivia Ford. Present to Troop Turtle Crossing Signs at two locations, three signs. Signs will fold up when it is not turtle crossing seasons. Posters will hand out near populations turtle crossing locations. Information tables. Supporting events. Farmer market.
My name is Mackenzie Ford. The turtle crossing signs will about be-- will be about $387.93. $130 for each for each sign, which we need about three. $75.10 for shipping. $463.03 total. Posters, flyers. We need about 100 copies. Color, $0.59. $0.99 per page. And B&amp;W, $0.10 and $0.50 per page. Print at home. Information table at sporting events. Snacks, maybe we can have them donated. Feed to have a table. Present location to Troop. There's no cost.
My name is Piper Delu. Next steps are to get permission to buy signs from Troop. Done. Buy the signs. Done. Work with the DPW to get a date on-- to get a date to hang signs. Print flyers. Schedule a time to distribute flyers. Share via social media.
The girls are happy to take any questions that you may have before we present our gifts.
Well, excellent job. Very great, very did a great job of public speaking as well. And congratulations on earning your, we said Bronze Award? Bronze Awards? Congratulations. It's fantastic. Julie, any questions or comments?
I had a quick question maybe JR could answer about the, when it's not crossing season and the signs fold up, how does, how does that work? So they always stay on the pole?
So...
Come on up.
JR Frye, Town Engineer. We actually had a design change midway through because we had identified some signs that are folding, but I was looking for a sign that just wouldn't go blank. I wanted it to always say something, but that when it would change, then it would highlight the difference to drivers. Because the primary element there is that we want to, in order to have the drivers be aware, you want to affect a change that they'll notice. So for that purpose, what we ended up going back to was just a standard sign. And I talked to our sign guy at DPW about how we would normally handle this, and he said because of the high likelihood that people may walk away with these, he'd prefer to have it just so that he will install it the way he normally would, and he'll just have to, it'll be part of his work order that, you know, in April, they'll put them out, and then in July, he'll take, he'll take them down, and we'll replace it with other signage that is appropriate to the location. Typically, it'll be like a thickly settled sign with a, and there'll be a speed limit sign or caution, speed caution sign on it, but the speed caution sign will be there year round.
Okay. Thank you. And then I just want to compliment the Girl Scouts for the idea, for the plan that you put together and the execution that you will go through. And I just wanted to tell you that I love the picture of the turtles because I drove by yesterday, actually, on Ward Street, and there is a sign right now. It's pretty small, and it says turtle crossing, but it's just the words. And I think it'll be more of an impact for drivers to see the pictures of the turtles. So this is a great project. Thank you.
Liz, any comments?
Yes. Well, thank you for bringing this forward. This is an important issue for our community. Very impressed with your presentation, very organized budget. And thank you for working with our town engineer and DPW. These are great skills, and certainly we will all benefit from them. We don't usually get to see Girl Scouts doing their Bronze Award, sometimes we get to see the Gold Award, so you probably are on that path, which is very, very impressive. So congratulations and thank you.
I see that Diane Denapley has her hand up. Oh, I think, Diane, if my memory is correct, there'll be a sign going close to your house.
Yes. Hi, can you hear me, Bill?
Go ahead. Carrie, fine. Go ahead.
Hi. Oh, hi, Diane Denapley, 16 Gardner Street. And I just want to thank the girls and their leaders for this project. I live near a rental pond, so I've seen many of the turtles crossing, some successfully and some not as successfully. So I do think it's a really important goal. And I also think the turtle sign will alert people to other animals in the area. Just today, I saw the first fawn in the yard. So I think your project roles will go long beyond helping the turtles. So thank you so much on behalf of the turtles. And your work is excellent. Your presentation skills were wonderful. I know you worked very hard. And thank you, JR and team. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Anyone else? All right. So there's no vote of the Select Board, but I want to let you know you have our full support with your project and our appreciation for doing this. So thank you very much. Christina, thank you for leading the troop too. Thank you so much.
If it's okay, we have the girls kind of formally presenting it.
Yeah. That'd be, oh yeah, we love pictures. Come on up. You all, yeah, excellent. Want to come, you want to come around here? Come around here. We have the great picture in the background here.
Gets to hold the sign, yeah.
You all kind of get in the middle there? All right.
Nice job. Thank you. Nice to meet you. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
I know. I love when they show-- All right. Next item on the agenda is the appointment of Assistant Harbor Masters. So I can tell you, Ken, this is always one of my favorite agenda items every year because it means summer is quickly coming. So it's good to have you back up here and tell us what you're looking for us to do tonight.
Sure. So I have, it was two, but right now it's just one. One of the individuals is still waiting for some paperwork to come back in. But I'm looking for the appointment of Bryce Akili, who's an Assistant Harbor Master. If you size a letter and so forth, you'll see that he's a younger, younger man. He's in high school, is going to be going to college. So he's going to be entering into kind of the lower ranks, and he'll be doing pumpouts, mooring rental checks, and mooring inspections. So he won't be doing any law enforcement or search and rescue. That's something that as he learns and progresses, he'll move up into those roles. So it's kind of a standard entry level position for him, and we hope that we'll have him here for, you know, a number of years, and he'll, he'll learn the basics of the harbor management stuff we'll have him doing. And then as he progresses, he can then work into the search and rescue. And the law enforcement really is just kept to Harbor Masters and Assistants that are sworn police officers.
Well, I would note that this would be the third member of the Akili family working not only for the town, but working in a law enforcement role. So it's just wonderful family, speaks volumes of their sense of service and what they've done for the town. Obviously, Bob, longtime Hingham police officer, high school classmate of mine, son's on the police department as a patrolman, and now Bryce. So that's just fantastic. So thank you and certainly my full support. Liz?
Yes. Thank you, Ken, for bringing this forward. Yeah, excited to see Bryce and thrilled to have someone young, enthusiastic, and wanting to get involved in safety, boating safety.
Julie?
No comment.
Great. Any members of the public have any questions or concerns about this agenda item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to appoint Bryce Akili as a part-time Assistant Harbor Master for the Town of Hingham for a three-year term ending June 30, 2028.
Second.
Roll call vote. Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, all the motion carries unanimously. And Ken, we need to get back in for that other assistant. Let us know. We'll get you on the agenda so you can get going for the summer.
Will do. Thank you very much.
Good seeing you again.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to the Brockton Beer Company for the Hingham Unity Council's fifth annual Juneteenth celebration to be held at Hingham Harbor on Thursday, June 19, 2025, from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. I believe we have Katie Sutton on the line. Katie, good evening.
Hi.
Good to see you. Well, we're all familiar with the event. It's one of the, I think it's one of the favorite events that we do every year, so thank you for doing it. Do you want to tell us a little bit about it, just so people, general public knows what you're asking us to do tonight?
Yeah, sure. We're actually producing, it's like the fifth annual, we're actually working with other South Shore towns, so we're producing it under the umbrella of the South Shore Unity Council, which is just a, an organization that I'm actually the president of. So we're all working together this time, which we're excited about. And Brockton Beer is a wonderful local brewery down in Brockton-owned, black-owned, and they did the event last year, and they're going to bring beer, and they're going to keep it in a tent, which will have ropes around and, you know, contained so that people can't be wandering all over the beach. But, you know, we will have a tent for folks to go in and get and buy some beer if they want. And we're also going to have kids' events and bounce houses and some great, some great musical entertainment and drum and dance team, a sensory tent for kids with sensory issues, and vendors and food and all kinds. It's going to be awesome.
Great. And the weather's always very nice that day, too, which is always a bonus, too. Usually, it's a beautiful day, so we'll keep our fingers crossed.
It was very hot last year.
It was very hot, but it was, it was a nice, it was a great day. It's a great day. So we'll hope for good weather again. We'll see if anybody--
We also, we rented tents this year, so such that, you know, we wouldn't, if it's really hot, people would have shade.
Great. Thank you. Liz, any questions?
Excellent. So it sounds like it's the same setup as, as previous years, except the addition of the tent, which is a nice, nice add-on. Well, thank you, Katie, for all you do, for all of the South Shore. This is a great event. We look forward to. And I saw, obviously, the chief signed off on it, and the detail, I know you always organize, so no questions. This will be a great event.
Julie, any questions?
No questions, but I'm looking forward to it. I think it's a great event, and I'm glad that you're back for the fifth year.
Do any members of the public have any questions about this agenda item? Seeing none, I take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to the Brockton Beer Company for the Hingham Unity Council's fifth annual Juneteenth celebration to be held at Hingham Harbor on Thursday, June 19, 2025, from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, all the motion carries unanimously. Good luck. Katie, we'll see you there.
Thank you guys so much.
Thanks, Katie.
Take care.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is to consider the petition of Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation for the relay of approximately 70 linear feet of six-inch asbestos cement and 530 linear feet of six-inch ductile iron sanitary sewer force main pipe with 600 linear feet of six-inch high-density polyurethane pipe from an existing manhole located in the vicinity to the entrance to the Hingham Driving Range on Union Street to an existing manhole located in the gravel area adjacent and prior to the Weir River just off Union Street, zero Union Street. That agenda item was read like a motion, so I think we, we know a lot about it already, but let's see what JR and Steve Perry have to say about it. So, Chair, why don't you lead us off as the town engineer?
Sure. The DCR park is served by, by the sewer, which is, which discharges into Hingham Sewer. So this is effectively their service lateral, but because of its length and the volume of flow, you can see, it's treated as a main. And, there we go. Because of its length, it's treated as a main. The, as noted in the application, it is a sewer force main. Eventually, it does discharge into Hingham's collection system. Steve Perry?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. So if I--
Steve, if you could just introduce yourselves to the public, just state your name and title.
No, you're not a resident. Absolutely. Stephen Perry. I am a project manager with Arcadis U.S. We are a design consultant for the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation.
Welcome. Go ahead.
Thank you. Just going to share my screen here. Hopefully, everyone would be able to see this to help orientate everyone. So we've got Hingham High School here. I'm going to zoom in a little bit. This is the Driving Range. This is the Weir River here. Essentially, there's an existing manhole located just south of the entrance to the Driving Range, and the force main that has had recent troubles with some breaks over the last six to eight months have occurred just south of the Weir River. The reason for these breaks, we believe, is because of hydrogen sulfide building up within this line. There are currently no air release valves on the line. The air release valves would allow for the pipe itself to expel the air and thus would not allow the hydrogen sulfide process to take place, which eats away at the inside of the pipe. So we would be adding an air release valve in the vicinity of the entrance to the Driving Range and then replacing with new high-density polyethylene plastic pipe all the way down and connecting to another existing manhole just prior to the Weir River. The reasons for installing this in a different location than where it is currently located is the existing force main essentially runs down the center line of Union Street. To the west here, there is a number of large diameter water mains, and to the north side of the road, there are not. So we would propose to put that new pipe within that travel lane. It would limit the disruption to the public, where we would not be opening a trench down the middle of the road. We would be staying within one travel lane and being able to, you know, with the assistance of the police department, move traffic around the construction site. It would also allow us to put the new pipe in, basically from start to finish, with the existing force main still in use, and then cut over on the last day, thereby, you know, limiting downtime of, or any bypass pumping that would be needed or disruptions to the Wamptuck State Park.
Anything else, Chair?
So we already, because that is one of the bus routes that obviously takes buses into the high school, but also connects down to East School, East Elementary School, as well as all the parents that bring their kids in from the south side of Hingham, I already kind of limited the appropriate working hours to avoid impacts during pickup and drop-off. So they, the work should only take a couple of weeks. And so with that said, if they, they should be able to either do that work this summer when there aren't any buses and they'll have full days, or if it, if they want to get started early, or if it, if they get started a little late and it rolls into the next school year, then they'd be restricted work hours, I think it was between 8:30 and about 2:20, in order to eliminate the, the challenges with getting people to school on time.
Well, if they wait a month, school's going to be over.
Exactly.
Right? So if they start it, you know, a month from now, we won't have the school, either the kids who drive with the school bus issues.
Yep.
And, I mean, how many weeks do you think it's going to take? Do you think it's going to take the whole summer?
No. It should only take a couple of weeks.
Great. Okay. And have you notified the abutters on the, on the road, or do you, do you intend to notify them before you start the work?
There aren't any direct abutters to the work, however, that is to say, no residences.
Right.
But I did instruct them to put message boards up so that people who travel on Union Street will be aware that construction is coming.
I mean, you do, you do have people that live in the meadows, on the, going down toward the park on the left side, a couple houses down there as well and behind there. So, and, you know, anything we can do, I thought, I thought you did a really good job messaging the work being done on 3A recently. So, well done. So why don't we use that same kind of system that people know in the area that work's going to be done there and so neighbors-- I mean, you did, you do have people that live in the meadows, on the, going down toward the park on the left side, a couple houses down there as well, and beyond, behind there, so. And, you know, anything we can do, I thought, I thought you did a really good job messaging the work being done on 3A recently, so, well done. So why don't we use that same kind of system, let people know in the area that work's going to be done there, and so neighbors don't caught off surprise by it.
All right.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, if I could also add, we filed the notice of intent for this project, as we are in the wetland buffer zone. We're on the agenda for the May 19th meeting, and as part of that, we did have to notify all butters along Thistle Patch, and I believe Tripphammer Road.
Great. On Union Street, too?
Uh, Union as well, yes.
Okay, great, all right, that's great, thank you. My, my last question, JR, is how long does this, where does this, does the sewer district end down? Does it end at the park? Does it go all the way down?
The park got, the park got kind of a special exemption.
Interesting.
Because of the public use and the, the larger volume of flow.
Okay.
It, it received a special exemption, as, kind of like, I think it got pulled in when the high school got pulled in.
Years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, great, thank you very much. Julie, any questions?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. All right, so you answered about how long it maybe take a couple of weeks. The Driving Range that is right there, so does that mean that the parking lot will be closed and access to the Driving Range would be closed for the entirety of the project?
No.
Okay.
No, it, that would, access to the Driving Range would be managed by the police detail. When they are working directly in front of the driveway, then at that point, there might be a limited access for the day or two that they're in front of the driveway.
Okay. And then my other, it seems like just yesterday that Union Street was repaved, but it is outside of the five-year moratorium, correct? So, so it's fine to open up the road now?
It is, it's fine to open up the road. They will be doing a full restoration from the center line to the curb line, to the gutter line. So there will, it will be a restored surface without an obvious trench patch.
Okay. And then finally, I echo Bill's suggestion of, you know, that your communication about the Route 3A work, I thought was excellent, and sending out the email and putting it on the town's website and other, you know, social media, so I would recommend that, because it is a very heavily traveled route, whether it's during the--
Yeah.
--school day or not, it just seems like that will have an impact, so people, it would be good if they know about it.
I'll work with Mr. Perry to put together some appropriate language when he has a more definitive idea of when they would start.
Okay, thank you.
Liz.
Excellent, well, thank you, thank you both. Are there any other impacts that we haven't discussed, or health concerns that people might be, you know, just anything that you think that we should also be aware of?
No, this is a pretty standard utility job, and they're able to, like he mentioned, they're able to do the construction in the dry and just switch it over the last day, which is even quite a bit quicker than what you see for a lot of the natural gas mains that we work. It's a lot more complicated, because you have multiple service lines that you have to bridge over to the new main, and because we're not, we don't have any service lines to connect, this will be a fairly straightforward construction, and without any, without any significant disruption or, or issues with the public, yeah.
Disruption, okay, great, thank you.
I saw our sewer commissioner, Clark Frazier, had his hand up. Clark, would you like to add something or ask a question?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, if you could just say Clark, because we all know you, but you name an address, please.
Yeah, Clark Frazier, 50, Bonnie Brier Circle, Hingham, member of the sewer commission. One question, because I haven't seen this come up with the commission, is what will be the procedure for abandoning the old force main? Anybody hear me?
Yep, yes.
JR, do you want that one, or Steve?
Did you have something in particular proposed, Steve?
We don't.
It's basically a cut and cap.
Yes, cut and--
Um, yeah. And the, the, the size of line that we're talking about is not, it's not a large line, and the soil matrix around it will continue to support it at the depth that it's at, so it is not, it's not an issue with future, future settlement or anything like that.
Oh, okay, so that would be left in place. Will all of this be in the town GIS?
Yes, it will, we will record the location that it's installed, and I, and I believe Arcadis will provide us with an ASBIL as well.
Okay, because I'm also concerned about keeping track of where the old one is.
Hey, Clark, I think Russ had a comment, I see our water superintendent, Russell--
Oh, is Russ here?
Ah, he's not, but I'm going to recognize him, so hold on. Russ, go ahead, do you want to add anything to Clark's questions?
Uh, Russell Tierney, Superintendent of Water and Soil. No, JR has it right, but we will definitely have ASBILs of where the old line was, you know, where we cut and capped it, to make sure we know, but the exact location of that is not on the GIS, but anywhere we expose it and see it, we will absolutely take some type of tie or GPS reading to, to make sure we have it in the ASBIL records.
Thanks, Russ.
I have no further questions.
Thanks, Clark, appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Do any, do any of the members, do any other members of the public have any questions or comments on this agenda item? All right, seeing none, I would take a motion.
I make a motion to approve the petition of the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation for the relay of approximately 70 linear feet of six-inch asbestos cement and 530 linear feet of six-inch ductile iron sanitary sewer force main pipe with 600 linear feet of six-inch high-density polyethylene HGP E pipe from an existing manhole located in the vicinity to the entrance to the Hingham Driving Range on Union Street to an existing manhole located in the gravel area adjacent and prior to the Weir River just off Union Street, zero Union Street. This, should I read the--
Go ahead.
This approval is subject to the stipulations of the Department of Public Works, as outlined in the letter dated May 8th, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor, by roll call vote, Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm as well, the motion carries unanimously. JR, good luck, thanks very much. Steve, thanks very much for your help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night. All right, next item on the agenda is to consider the agreement with Waste Quip Manufacturing Company LLC for a commercial stationary compactor for the transfer station. We have Ashley Sanford, our DPW superintendent, and David Sequer with us tonight, so welcome, and tell us about what you're asking us to do.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Good evening.
It's been that kind of day, huh?
Yeah. I guess, so this is one of our, this is the last compactor in my chain of compactors that need to be replaced, so we're all up to date with that. So luckily with the town meeting and the approval of the funding, I was able to get that ordered, and we're super excited to be able to get, all of the compactors will be basically brand new, down at the transfer station.
Excellent. David, anything to add?
Um, just to outline, that was in the, the memo to the board, that they will be receiving a $1,000 trade-in as well with this, and the expected lifespan is around 20 to 25 years.
Yep.
Is that about right? With a delivery time of six to eight weeks, and this does come with a standard warranty that's three years structural, one year parts, one year labor, it's also in the quote. And as Ashley mentioned, this would kind of bring us up to speed here of replacing all of the trash compactors now at the transfer station.
And how many, again, Ashley, were there, there was five?
Four altogether.
Four altogether.
Yep.
And we, one of them, we moved over to the paper, right? Was it paper, or, yeah, so that now--
Two actually got moved over to paper.
All right, great.
But that's still, that's in the process, and they're, they're all coming in at the same time, basically, it's worked out really well, so they'll all be, both two will be transported over to paper. The old paper ones will be taken away, and we're getting credit for that, and then this last one will be getting the trade-in for.
Excellent. You know, when I went to the transfer station on Sunday, I went a little later in the day, about 3:00, and just amazing the volume of residents that go through there. It really is, it's like the cars are backed up onto Hobart, and like, it's, it's amazing the use, the constant use on those from Thursday to Sunday, so this is great, and town meeting was very generous with the DPW this year with the Capitol Project.
We appreciate it.
Much needed, thank you residents for supporting that, it's good to have these, this equipment replaced and moving, moving forward with it, so. Julie, any questions or comments?
I'm just happy that the warrant article and all the vehicles are being taken care of, or, you know, you're going out and, and purchasing them, so this, this article, or this agenda item and the next one, that will complete the list that was in that article, correct?
No, not yet, I'm still working on two more items.
Okay, all right, that's it, thank you.
Liz, any questions?
No other questions, thank you. Ashley, bring this forward.
No problem.
Any members of the public have any questions about this agenda item? Seeing none, I take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with Waste Quip Manufacturing Company LLC for a commercial stationary compactor for the transfer station in an amount not to exceed $77,497.
Second.
All those in favor, Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
And I'm as well, the motion carries unanimously, and stay up here for our next item, item 10, to consider the agreement with Spectrum Manufacturing C. Incorporated for a T9 open-top trash trailer for the transfer station, so tell us about this item.
Um, so the trailers that everyone puts their household trash into, that is one of the trailers that we're replacing, they just, as they get older, this current T9 is 15 years old, and the belts and everything were out, because the, it's a belt that ends up rolling the trash off of it when it comes back, when they take it down to CMAS to empty the trailers, like a conveyor belt in the bottom of it, so we're just replacing that one, because it's just starting to cost a lot in repairs with its age, and so we're really excited to get that.
And you did say this was 15, the one we replaced was 15 years old?
Yes.
Wow, okay, great. Well, how, what's the, what's the status of the other ones? Are they in good shape, or are you concerned?
Um, we have some that are coming up on age, within the next couple of years. Right now, the majority of them are in pretty good shape.
Okay.
Our, our maintenance team over there does a really good job of, you know, just staying on top of it and making sure that everything's running well.
Great. Liz, any questions?
I'm assuming that the current trailer doesn't have any trade-in value.
Uh, hopefully, so.
And is there a warranty on this one?
On the new one, uh, yes.
The, it's a standard warranty as well.
Okay.
In the lead time, we were, we're still waiting for that lead time.
Of six to seven weeks.
Oh, is that what he did?
They actually ended up--
Oh, awesome.
They got back to me later, kind of later, did they?
Okay, great, so we should have it before the September 1st.
Yep, that's what we're hoping.
Julie, any questions?
No questions, thanks.
Any members of the public have any questions? All right, I'll take a motion.
I make a motion to approve Spectre Manufacturing, Inc. for a T9 open-top trash trailer for the transfer station in an amount not to exceed $121,984.
Second.
Roll call vote, Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm as well, the motion carries unanimously. Ashley, thanks very much.
Thank you guys so much.
All right, have a great, have a great rest of the week. David, we're going to keep your services, one other item here. All right, our next item on the agenda is to consider the agreement with EDM Studio Incorporated for rendering engineer design services Phase 2 for the Center for Active Living Building Project, and we have Tom and, we have Tom and Jean with us, so come on up, grab a seat. Good to see y'all.
Dave, just bring another one of those kids down, yeah, behind.
Tom, good evening.
Good evening, Tom Carey, 1131 Main Street. We have the least of the presentations tonight, nothing to match the Girl Scouts, that's for sure.
No big checks.
It's a hard item.
If they're still in town, we could use them at the dedication when we finish this I know that the town administrator has, has already looked into this at some detail, and this is, of course, a board decision, not a committee decision, since it involves contracting for the town, but we did want to attend and let you know that the building committee unanimously recommends continuing with EDM. We believe their performance has been superb throughout the feasibility study. We did some additional checking and evaluation and think that they are fully capable of moving forward with the next stage and have the appropriate experience for dealing with bidding and the like under Massachusetts law, so we're quite pleased that we are able to continue with them. And we feel that that is also a plus, as opposed to in the days when this would have had to have been rebid, you're sort of starting from scratch. With any luck, we'll be working on a tight schedule, looking forward to next year's town meeting and having something to actually vote on whether we're going to do it and, and get started. Many members of the public, certainly a lot of those in the council on aging, have commented about how long these projects take, and it, they all take an enormous amount of time. In the project for this building, we started in, I think, 93, and the, held the dedication in 98, so it was five years from concept to dedication of the building. And maybe with any luck, now we'll move even faster on the council for aging. Jean, I don't know whether you have anything you'd like to add.
Well, as a dual member of the building committee and the council on aging, we had a meeting this, this afternoon at 1:00, the council on aging, and we're moving really quickly, we're trying to identify all the things we're going to need to make people aware of what we are and make sure the general public knows what we're doing, so that we get more than just the seniors. We want to make sure that everyone knows that this is going to be, it's going to be a community event, and so we're all excited, we're all excited this morning, we were excited when we passed it unanimously at the building committee, so I'm, I'm generally excited. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. David, want to add anything about this, this item?
Um, so, yeah, just quickly, there is one additional services that's on the second to last page of the proposal. They are listed as optional, and as written with the contract, it would cover $2,276,000 with that additional if we decided to move forward with it. They are all quote-unquote worst-case scenario, so for example, there's an other site improvements that's optional, that could be something that includes an improvement of, of an access road, or sidewalk connections, or identifying areas of increased accessibility through paved areas, so that $200,000 is, you know, worst-case scenario. So if approved tonight, moving forward, basically what that would mean is if we, when we kind of circle back to a traffic study, we would basically just issue a notice to proceed and, and move forward with it.
Thank you. Tom, do you want to add anything? I know that you were involved with this.
Sure, yeah, I think the, the structure of the contract gets us started with the design, all the core design work that needs to happen, it gives us all the flexibility to incorporate all the necessary steps along the way through pre-authorization. All these optional additional services are within the appropriation, and we could, we can move at a, at the fastest, I think, possible speed to get the proper design done for the public. And the other thing I'd note is, along the way, and I think Mr. Carey suggested this, that there will be dozens and dozens of public meetings for the public to engage along the way in this process, and I think it's really important that they do so, we will be reaching out, we'll be doing very, I think, specific targeted informational campaigns to make sure everybody understands what we're doing and what we're proposing and why, as this design comes to fruition. I do expect, I've spoken with the contractor, or, excuse me, the architect, I do expect to have a, in essence, an estimate, a quote, perhaps even a physical quote in hand from a bidder, which would be the goal, we, we'll have either an estimate or a quote, right? The quote is, is the defined number. I'm very much hoping to have that in time for the town meeting. At a worst-case scenario, we'll have the estimate, but I'm very confident we'll have the quote, too.
Great, thank you.
You bet.
Well, first of all, I wanted to congratulate Tom, Jean, your committees, your council on, great work-- on, great work leading up to this year's town meeting. It was a fantastic vote to move the project forward. And I know that you all, including Beth, showed great leadership. Tom, your voice at town meeting is always so important. So, thank you, thank you for your words. And I think you've done such great jobs. And I remember when this was built, I remember Tom was, people might not know, but he was named citizen of the year that year for the great work you did. And thrilled to have you leading this effort also. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
I think to echo Tom's point, you know, I, just quickly, I envision this year to be, to introduce this and socialize this with the, with our residents to be similar to what we did with the capital project of two years ago where we had, you know, many public forums, many meetings here. So, we could get everybody's questions answered and concerns addressed as we go forward. But, you know, this is going to be, you know, my top priority and I'm assuming my colleagues share that with me as well. This is a big project and, you know, we're gonna be, gonna give it everything we got. So, I'm looking forward to working within the year ahead. So, Liz, any questions or comments?
Well, thank you. And as Bill said, thank you for all the work leading up until town meeting. I know there's more to do and we'll go as fast as we can. So, just to clarify, the optional services are within that 1.7 million price tag or no?
No, the, the 1.7 million still staying on that, on that same page. It's the 1.6 million plus up to $50,000 for travel expenses.
Okay.
And then when we would circle back to the optional, it would be an additional if we were to do all of it. It would be an additional $549,000, bringing us to 2.2 million.
Okay.
Which would still be left over for OPM services for this phase as well. And then just to note, back with the annual town meeting of 2020, we had started with $525,000 that was approved there. There's still a remaining balance of 340, I'm sorry, 347,000 now that we would use up that first before tapping into this contract.
Okay. And we're still within, obviously, the appropriation from town meeting?
We are, yes.
Okay. Okay, excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And just real quick, Liz, on your question you usually ask, we understand that that is not a target. That's not the goal, suspend everything? Not the goal, I understand.
Up to, yes.
Up to, that's right.
Excellent.
Julie, any questions?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Well, first of all, thank you and thank, thank you for all of your hard work up to this date. And congratulations on the win at town meeting and that now you can move forward to pick a consultant. I wanted to ask just quickly who the stakeholders who would be working with EDM and giving the input about the design of the Center for Active Living? The committees...
Stakeholders, you mean in terms of the...
What committees or groups would be working on...
Anybody and everybody.
And that's involved, exactly what goes in there.
I mean, we're, we're the ones charged by town meeting with overseeing the project. But obviously, it has an impact on Bear Cove Park and its activities. It may impact some of the departments who have activities down there. We'll take input from anybody and everybody, including outreach. In this project, the very first thing I did when the committee was appointed was sent letters to all the neighbors around this building. Gave them my phone number and said, "Call if you've got any questions or problems." We've got the same approach here, only with all of the modern communication, I can just say it, anybody who's got any concerns about the project or any input or advice, we're always looking for good advice, we'd be happy to hear from them. And there will be regular public meetings of the building committee. And while we, you know, and the, the architects, I mean, people may not realize this, thinking that if it's a town project, it's somehow separate. It isn't. We're subject to the building codes. We're subject to all of the regulatory materials. They're quite accustomed to having to deal with our own planning department, our own building commissioner, comply with state codes and keep an eye out on all of those factors. So, the number of eyes on a project like this is enormous, really.
Okay, great. Thank you. And just one other quick question. I just want to, as a former member of the advisory committee, understand that during the warrant article process, advisory committee will be looking at, and I guess they'll have at that point during the warrant article review, an estimate for the project. And I just wanted to make sure that EDM will have that deliverable so that advisory committee can do its due diligence in a timely fashion so we're not racing to town meeting with limited information.
Yeah. Yeah. That's our goal. And we're, we're well aware of the fact that when someone, the general public thinks, oh, okay, so it's what, next April 28th? And I'm a former advisory committee member myself and I, I know things need to be available a lot earlier than that for the selectmen and advisory. And we'll make sure that the liaison and the agency itself, if you want us to come in and brief everybody, will, will be the very first to know. And the, the architects have been instructed that the deadlines we're working with are the deadlines of town, of the court of select fund, the warrant, the time for advisory to consider it and the like.
Great. Thank you.
If I could just add to that, so Tom answered partly exactly as I was going through a lot of the permitting work, the building commissioner for sure. So, to put, to underscore Tom's answer, we've already set up weekly meetings with myself, Tom, the architect, and others as necessary throughout the course of the year for a weekly meeting. And then going forward from there, we'll, we'll be meeting with, as early as the first week in June with the staff on the permitting floor, just to understand exactly what their requirements are likely to be and move from there. We're extremely confident that we will have an estimate. I'm, I'm personally very confident because I believe in this, this architect so much that we'll have the quote in hand as well. He's nervous, but that's his job is to be nervous.
Yeah.
We'll get it done. I believe it. So...
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Having a bid would, would be ideal. And this project, we had an estimate, went to the override, enormous success. And off we went to the races and had to come back at the next town meeting looking for an extra $220,000, which was a pretty significant sum at the time. And everyone had their fingers crossed because, you know, the bid came in higher than, than the estimate. We actually got a higher percentage of support the second time, which was good to see. But I don't want to go through that again.
No. Thank you.
Do any members of the public have any questions about this agenda item? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to execute the agreement with EDM Studio, Incorporated for the Phase 2 Design Services for the Hingham Center for Active Living in the form attached hereto.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. The motion carries unanimously. Tom, Jean, thanks very much.
Thank you.
David, thanks up to now as well.
Thank you.
One step closer.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is a discussion and potential vote to file a petition for special act to authorize the town of Hingham to utilize alternative methods for publications of legal notices in accordance with Article 28 of the 2025 Town of Hingham Annual Town Meeting. Michelle, I think you're gonna leave this one for us? Thank you.
So, one of the themes, I think you may have noticed tonight, is trying to move forward quickly with things that were passed at town meeting two weeks ago. So, this is following up on Article 28. It would give us, so, which authorized the board to file state legislation to give us some more flexibility in terms of legal notices that are required for a number of areas, procurement, adjudicatory hearings, et cetera. So, if, if you are amenable to approving this this evening, we'll get the paperwork filed with probably Rep. Moschino's office later this week and get the process going because it takes time to work its way through the legislature. But right now, as you may recall, we spend a significant amount of money between $18,000 and $20,000 a year on required paper newspaper ads. There's not really, I'd say newspapers of general circulation in this area anymore. So, I'm not sure how many people are actually seeing the notices. This would allow us to post it on a bulletin board or electronic screen downstairs near the clerk's office and then either use a newspaper electronically or on paper or publish it on the town's website.
Well, I was happy to see this, I was happy to see town meeting pass this. I think the notification process is somewhat, you know, integrated. I'm glad that times are catching up, recognizing that there's electronic media sources out there that people go to in addition to the old sources. And just, it's great that we can find new ways to do this process. So, thanks, thanks for the town meeting for supporting this. Liz, do you have any questions?
No questions. I just want to confirm this was a unanimous vote by town meeting, correct?
It was, as attested by Carol, our, our town clerk.
Great. So, thank you for bringing this forward.
Julie?
No questions.
See your hand up. Diane, go ahead.
Hi, Diane Donnelly, 16 Gardner Street. I have a question and then maybe a comment. The question is, would this allow for the town warrant to not be mailed physically? Or would that be beyond the scope of this, what you're about to vote on? And then my second question is regarding accessibility. Although our town website does have an accessibility feature, most of the attached documents are in a PDF, which are not accessible. So, I know we kind of sent an email before town meeting just saying that warrant in the future, maybe it could be put into a format that actually is ADA compliant. But if we're moving to more online and tech, you know, which is, I think, good, there's lots of values to that, but we really have to be cognizant that those documents do need to comply with the ADA requirements. Thank you.
Diane, thank you. Excellent point. Correct me if I'm wrong, but this, this does not apply to the warrant being mailed out. That would be, I think that would require another discussion. And as, you know, if we move in that direction, obviously, we're gonna need some technology improvements, as you pointed out, to make sure that we are ADA compliant and we do assist those with disabilities. So, point well taken, but I don't think this would impact that, correct?
I believe that's correct. That's a different bylaw change that we would have to consider in the future.
Thank you.
Yes, but to Diane's point, I think whatever we can do to make sure that these postings are ADA compliant and searchable or readable by different tools would be helpful going forward, separate from the warrant discussion.
Absolutely.
Great.
Thank you. Julie?
No, I have nothing.
Great. Anything else to add, Liz?
No, thank you. Thanks Diane for that.
All right. With that, I would take a motion.
I make a motion to file a petition with the General Court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to request a special act to authorize the town of Hingham to utilize alternative methods for publications of legal notices in the form approved under Article 28 of the 2025 Town of Hingham Annual Town Meeting.
Second.
Roll call vote. Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. The motion carries unanimously. Michelle, thanks for the presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is appointments and or reappointments. I believe we have one appointment tonight.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to appoint Ness Corente to the Human Rights Commission with a term ending June 30, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor? Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. The motion carries unanimously. Congrats to Ness as she rolls off the school committee, she rolls on to the HRC. So, thrilled for her and appreciate her continued service of the town. All right, next item on the agenda is public comment. Do any members of the public, any members of the public have any public comment tonight for matters not on the agenda? Seeing none, we move to town administrative select board report. So, let's start with Michelle.
Nothing, thank you.
Tom?
Just one item. I did approve a special one-day license for Vitamin C Brewing at the Hingham Historical Society's annual event called Springham. That's being held this Saturday, May 17th, and with an alternate date of Sunday, the 18th, from 2:00 to 5:00 at the Hingham Historical Society with an estimated attendance of up to 200 people. And there will be a police detail required.
Thank you. Julie?
I have nothing.
Liz?
Nothing else to add. Thank you.
I was gonna add, great weekend coming up. We get Springham on Saturday, as Tom pointed out. Battle of Grape Island on Sunday. This is a great weekend in town. Go out, enjoy your community. If you've never been to either of those events, I highly encourage your attendance there. They're both fantastic. As I said last, last week, the Grape Island reenactment is great, particularly this year being 250. And Springham is just great. The Stokel Society does a great job with it. So, with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. Motion carries unanimously.